All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 30th, 2021. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here for our special session at Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Commissioner Strick, Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Harrison, and I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. We have no minutes for the day. With public testimony, speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by the county staff. They may be placed on the future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Anyone here wish to speak? Daniels, anybody seen any comments? To those that may be watching online, you can go to our webpage, huntcounty.net. There's a banner for comments that you can add a comment there, type in a comment to be read to the court later in the meeting, or you can put your telephone number, and we'll call you back in appropriate time, and you can address the court over telephone. We'll check that again prior to the end of the meeting. Being no business, new business, no consent, action item number... We got anything to pay up? Do y'all have anything we need to do? Action item number one, vehicle purchase of Hunt County Sheriff's Department. Commissioners, Steve, of course, has been heading up the Enterprise vehicles for us, and we had turned in orders for various vehicles. I think we've currently gotten two of the vehicles in that we had requested. Two constables, I think...
Constable Sheets and Constable Benson.
Benson, yeah. Okay, theirs came in. The other two, they're not available, or they're requested at this time. The sheriff had requested five Tahos, and they don't have any Tahos, but they do have quite a few Ford...
Interceptors.
Interceptors, thank you. And looking at the budget, and looking at what's been going on, and looking at the state of the sheriff's department vehicles, I wanted to bring it to the court today and talk about it. The sheriff department has 53 total vehicles on the law enforcement side. Twenty-seven of those are over five years old. Eight of them are 10-plus years old, three of them being Tahos. There's eight Tahos that are five to 10 years old. A total of 19 from five to 10 years old. And then we have 26 that are less than five years old. Didn't break down. Most of those are Tahos, I think, on the newer ones. The court had been having a policy for several years that we'd buy five new Tahos every year for the sheriff's department. But with 53 vehicles, that means we turn them over every 10 years, and that's just not, to me, a good policy, particularly today, in today's environment. We've grown. We got more, you know, we need more troops on the ground. We've got to have reliable transportation. And since we've got so many older vehicles, and we actually have availability, but they won't be here till May, June...
Five to six months.
Five to six months. So we're almost going to be in the next year's budget, and we know we can get some. And if we stayed on the same five, buy five this year and five next year, he's not even going to get the five this year until nearly next year, anyway. So I thought it made sense that we tried to go ahead, and since we're supposed to be able to get 10 of the interceptors to talk about and see if we want to purchase 10 instead of the five that's already currently in the budget. And since we've not had any deliveries, we have not spent any money out of the 205,000 we budgeted for Enterprise purchases this year. So we have more than enough money to take care of it. And I think the sheriff wants... I'll let him speak in a minute, but of the 10, seven of them, he's going to make patrol cars and three CID cars. So there will be no upfitting costs for the CID cars, except for radio. Five of the seven, the outfit kits are already budgeted for, so we would have to either use Enterprise money and transfer it to the sheriff's department, do a budget amendment, and give them enough money to outfit the two additional ones, or take it out of contingency or somewhere else. But we don't have the funds budgeted for two of them to upgrade them to patrol cars. But that would put seven new vehicles on the street and give us a total of about 30 vehicles that are within five years of age, which with 28 patrol officers, I think sheriff's deputies that are out there, that gives us enough vehicles with some backups to when cars are down. And I just think, it's my personal opinion, that, you know, we're budgeting $180,000 a year for vehicle repair and maintenance. And I just can't help but believe if we don't get newer models, that that number can't go down, that we can't help pay for some of this by getting and keeping newer vehicles on the road. That, of course, some of it'd be, you know, newer than some of it will be covered under warranties. And then until they get older, more miles, rougher condition, do they start having a lot of troubles, anyway. So I think it ought to be the goal of the court, that we want to get newer, better vehicles and try to save the money on repair and maintenance costs to help offset some of the costs. But if we do the 10 now, and then if next year we have it in the budget, and we can do five more next year, that gets them in pretty good shape for us to move forward to keep them in better shape. And if we get some opportunities to add a few more to get them to where they need to be, I think that would get their full department in a lot better condition than they've been in in quite a while. So Sheriff, you want to come forward and give any comments?
I haven't answered any questions I've had. Since we've got 900 something square miles, y'all?
There you go. You hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The thing is, is, you know, y'all all understand, you know, we've got 900 something square miles. Y'all understand the population explosion now, okay? We got it. January 1st, my officers respond to 17,793 just since January the 1st. You talk about running, and on top of it, I'll tell you right now, we are a proactive police force. We're on the, I mean, in a... So we're trying to come up with good equipment, ways that these officers, you know, can... Everything from downloading videos out in the field. I don't need them sitting at the office. I don't need them with broke-down vehicles. I don't need them sitting up there.
Explain that to them, so they understand that downloading the cameras.
Yeah, one thing we got into, right, is downloading the cameras. They have to come up there and set to download their activity all through the night. Well, that's hours. If you add it up, it's scary, the hours that they got to sit just to do it. I don't like it. I want my officers to be able to set in an intersection in a highly populated or a problem area, hit a button, and download their stuff to the clouds to where we can print it off, and it's out there for the public if they do an open records question, whatever they need. My guys don't need to be at the office unless shift change or booking in, and that's the way I feel about it.
With the current technology you have, you don't have that ability?
No.
Only way you can download the film...
Pull up at the office.
Pull up to the office and download.
And it's in set, and it takes a long time. I'm battling that. We're trying to keep officers out and about, you know. We're limited. One of the things I said was time management, you know, and that's one, that's a big thing to me. We've even narrowed it down, and my troops, and I'm going to say it, my troops ain't happy about it. They can eat a minimum of two officers, two of our marked units on patrol can eat lunch. Rest of them has got to be on the street. We don't, we're breaking off, we're working, okay? But the biggest thing, too, is we can't have cars. These guys... Well, I'm going to ask the question, I think, I'll go with you. Phillip, you was an officer for how many years?
Fifty-one now.
Okay. But on the street, I think DPS turned in their cars at around 100,000, give or take?
They were put on the deal at 100,000.
At 100,000. Okay. My first 12 vehicles that would come off is over 150,000. One of them is at 193,000. Do you want to be running code, which is hot, trying to get to somebody that's in need in a stressful situation? Would you want your son, who's a police officer, your daughter, who's a police officer, running at a high rate of speed, driving a car with 200,000 miles on it? And the deal is, is these county roads are not like highway, I mean, you know, highway miles. I've got a pickup that's got a lot of highway miles on it, a lot of highway miles, my personal. It's not banged up, looks really nice. You run down these roads and these places we go, the bottoms are in a rough shape. Well, we got to have this for officer safety. That's another thing. We got to get there to help the people. And what I don't want is one of my guys in a situation. I'm not a fan. I'm a, if something works, drive it, buy it. I eat the same thing when I go to the same restaurant, that's just the way I am. When they said something about the interceptors, I didn't like the idea. But when, the way things is right now, we got to take what we can get. But I researched on the interceptors because, and this is a joke, but, you know, when your wife's Christmas shopping, and you're sitting in mall parking lots, you don't have much to do. So I researched the interceptors, the gas tanks are a hair smaller, not even much mileage, right, just within a mile difference. I'm looking at it going, hey, you know, maybe we do this change, maybe we like it. So, because at first, I was totally against it, but we live in different times. We've got, we've got to have vehicles. And anything else, any other questions?
No, I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
Did talk with someone who referenced these interceptors. They've had pretty good luck with them. They have had transmission problems every once in a while, but that'll be covered in reference to this. But also, I'd like to bring something else up. You are the chief law enforcement officer of the county. I don't know whether a lot of people understand that basically that is a title.
It's a title.
A lot of people don't realize that. I was looking at this, and I do agree with what Judge Stovall said, and I agree with what you said also. There was talking about law enforcement in Hunt County here. I know that Homeland Security has been able to get their vehicles, and here recently, who was it, the two up there, the two constables got theirs also.
One of them didn't even have a vehicle.
Pardon?
One did not have a vehicle.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, he had to borrow one because nobody had held that office for a while, and he didn't have a vehicle.
That's right. And I agree with that. But I think you're the chief law enforcement also. I believe you need 10. But also, I believe, and I don't believe they're ordered right now, but we had Constable Reagan, he had two, and Constable Richard there, he had four wanted, but they've been going down to one. My question, are these two ordered for them? Do we have them? They are not?
No. We can't get what they asked for.
We can't get what they've asked for.
They're not available.
Okay. Well, what we need to do is find out, I believe one of them was wanting one of these. What we need to do is, while we're doing this, address...
Well, no, what we got to do today, Phillip, is try to work this out and get them ordered before somebody else buys them, because they're not going to last forever. So that's why I called a special session. I did not want to wait another week and then somebody buy these up, because they're going crazy. So I want to get this done today, and then we'll address that other issue. But I don't, I'm not arguing and saying, no, we shouldn't do that other. I'm just saying today, let's focus on getting the sheriff's vehicles ordered so we can sign the order and get them placed, so we can get those vehicles, and we can go back and work on some of those other vehicles. But right now, we're told, I mean, they were all wanting three-quarter ton Chevys, I think, and they're not even available. I think we could get a half-ton Chevy, but not a three-quarter ton. We could get, like, there was one Dodge available, I think they said it was a three-quarter ton. And so, you know, we're, it's not that simple just to say, well, we'll just switch over and get something else. You know, they may have to go to, you know, some other vehicle. But we just got to get what we can get in this day and time, so...
When we met with the sheriff and chief the other day, when we come up with, and Gere was there as well, we walked out of there with the five, and then we talked about the 10 if we can get them. Whenever we called Enterprise to discuss about the availability for these interceptors, they advised us that it might, we might not be able to get 10 if we wait to the next court session. Therefore, that's why we're here today to discuss if we can get the 10 vehicles or if we have to stick to the five vehicles. Once we get done here today, if this is voted on, that we can get 10 vehicles, as soon as we walk out of here, the judge will order those 10 vehicles. That way, we can lock them in, because we may not be able to get them in a week. And that's what we're trying to get accomplished today. And that's it.
I agree with that. One thing I would like to go on, and it would be allowable to talk about in reference, because this is to the use of property or property taking place with it. I hope that we're fortunate in getting these 10. I really do. But also, basically, since we don't have these other ones on order, which we should still have them on order, in my opinion, we need to make sure that what we have, that we get replaced with the SO, that these ones that we're getting rid of, if they're still useful and safe at this point, that they be transferred to these constables to where they can use them.
Well, I don't think of a vehicle with 150,000 or 190,000 miles, I really don't care to send them back on the street for anybody for Hunt County.
Well, I think they already have those.
Well, so why more?
I would have to agree on that, too. Because here's the thing, as chief, that's just a title. I'm going to tell you right now, and I say the same thing, I'm mumbled. I'm no different than Richard Benzema, my chief deputy, or any other officer stretching the badge. I'm just doing my job. And, but the thing, I have to make decisions, and I'm going to be honest, I don't want to... They don't answer the hot calls that we do as much, but they do back us up. And I don't want to see a vehicle that I've taken off for being unsafe that I feel in my heart, then wind up answering the call and having an accident because something broke. Okay? That's on me. And I'm going to stand pretty solid on that, whatever you got to do. But I just want you to keep in mind that whatever I pull off, believe me, is going to be wore out. I'm not, I'm not looking to, you know, I don't care what body style it is or whatever. If it's low mileage and wore, which I haven't, but I would keep it. But the thing is, is what I'm getting rid of is, like I said, about the top 12, over 150,000. And then I'm going to guarantee you, the 150 has been worn out.
Yeah.
I'm just going to tell you. But I just don't feel that comfortable with that, Mr. Martin. But whatever, I've got to go with whatever the court said, and we will retire them vehicles. Whatever y'all want to do with them.
Get them auctioned, get them out of here.
We will retire them. I've got a special spot, and if we're doing that now, it don't take long. We put them on the auction block, and they're gone. So it don't look like a wrecking yard over my SO. I do not want that to happen.
Now, we're talking about auction, and I agree with that, but there's two ways to get rid of this auction in reference to whether it be Enterprise, which would cost us 600 and something dollars for each one of them for them to come and get.
We're not going to do, we don't do bore-out vehicles with Enterprise.
Okay.
The only time we used Enterprise, which is a few times when we had newer vehicles that were being swapped out with low miles, we felt like they'd get us more money going through their auction than we would through our auction. And, of course, it's so different times now. Used vehicles are bringing so much money right now, it's just nuts. Nobody knows what to do anymore with vehicles.
Two to three sitting out there right now, and as soon as them cars, I don't want to see them. If five to six, between five and 10 is out there, there's too many cars coming, because that does not look professional upon us to have a bunch of broken-down cars without any straps sitting out there. And the other thing is, right now, as you said, running cars, whether they're old and worn out or not, are bringing good money. You set them things out there for months, and there's nothing left of them by the time it swells and runs track.
Sheriff, I want to thank this, and then I want to thank you for coming up here and talking to the public, because you're not only talking to us, but you're talking to the public to advise us what's going on. We appreciate that. I do highly consider that we need to also consider in reference to these constables' vehicles also that haven't had it. I do appreciate you coming up here, and I respect you. I appreciate you.
Sheriff?
No, thank you.
Judge, you may know this answer, too, but explain the cost difference between the interceptors and the Tahos.
Steve would know more about that, probably. They're about the same, aren't they?
No, the Tahos are a little bit more. They're probably about $8,000 more than what the police interceptors are. These police interceptors, we're getting for 37,000 and some change. And the Tahos are somewhere around the 45, 42, somewhere like that price range, which obviously, they're not available right now. And I know that's what the sheriff and the chief would rather have, is the Tahos. But the police interceptors is the only police vehicle that we can get in stock right now or get ordered.
We're going to, and I'm not opposed to these, that's what I said at first, I was, this is a trial basis. If at the end of it, we like them, they perform good, hey, we're going to save some money because we're going to order them, and that sound near the goal? That's my plan. Anything's going to save taxpayers money, but we have to have good vehicles that we can depend on, that we go places we need to go and provide the service.
And hold up as good as they do. And hold up well.
And that's what I said. Yes, we cannot, you know, have broken them.
May I bring this up, Sheriff? From my understanding, I believe you said 37,000, 38,000, somewhere in there, but wasn't there an additional cost to each unit that you know?
Well, that upfitting, but it's, that's in their budget. We budgeted for five. Now, I said that, you know, we're going to have to come up with two upfitting costs, which, y'all, because we had the estimate for the Tahos, did y'all get the number back, buddy, for the, these Ford interceptors yet?
I haven't.
Okay. We don't know the cost difference.
I haven't seen it yet, either.
Okay. We got to get a new cost number because they're different vehicles, so we don't know if it'll be close to the same or different.
It'll be a little bit cheaper on the police interceptors than it is on the Tahoe.
So we might have, we might not need that much more money to get seven of them outfitted, but that was the plans. But I want to make it clear, Phillip, that we have not spent any money in three months, October, November, two months so far, and we won't spend any money. Well, we got two that have been delivered, so those payments are around 550 a month, I think they were, on the two constables. So that's, so in eight or nine months, we're going to spend about 9,000 for both of them out of 205. What money? We won't get these till April, May, June sometime, so we don't have about five months. And their payments are around 900 a month. So it'd be 9,000 a month for four or five months. So we still going to have in excess of $150,000 left in that account.
Yes, sir.
And so we're, it's not going to stop us from ordering other vehicles that we're playing for and all that if we can find them.
And y'all have been...
It's not, we're not substituting.
The Commissioners' Court, I said I want to thank you because y'all have helped me out with our budget, and one thing that I, if we can get them in, you know, we're in the same time, we can't get anything. But I want to praise the, just here a while back, an officer, and I was 118, he was at the other side of Lake, and I'm back and barely here in the statue because he's got a gun. And I turned around, and you couldn't get any traffic, any nothing. Y'all allow us, we got to get, we got a repeater unit that's going in each vehicle now, trying to, you know, get, we're trying to run 100,000, but that's a lot cheaper than us trying to outfit 400,000, 500,000 through the whole county. And, you know, we're trying to keep officer safety, but like I said, answer these calls. It's a different world we're living in, and I've just got to get my, I got to get my guy at home at night safely, and we got to answer to this and get out there and...
Sheriff, you brought up something earlier in your talk. You talked about this technology that's come about, that you can put it in the clouds. Do you have any of that technology now to where they can unload?
No, we have to come, we have to drive our units to hunt, to hold our video. We have to go to the back of the building, and we have a satellite, and I'm here asking all, where's my technology?
He's the wrong person to be asking about it, too.
I'm the wrong one to be asking, but...
Y'all speak the same language.
Put it together, a technology. But anyway, I got to go to the lab, I think I'll bother. And it's literally so slow, and if you can't tell, if anybody knows me, I'm not a, I don't sit still very well. So I'm running up and down the hall telling these guys, hey, why don't you be out here? Why don't you be doing this? Why don't you? And they're upset with me because I'm asking them to do something that's impossible. We have to have video.
That's right.
We have to keep these videos. The public has access to these, you know, there's open records and everything. So we have to download, we have to be there, we have to get it done. So what, what my plan is, is like I said, is this system we're trying to get up, where you can be anywhere pretty much in the county, hit your button, and it will start downloading that video. Well, if you hit a bad spot, it'll stop, but it'll pick back up, same spot, keep downloading. Well, that is just tremendous.
I think you ought to do this, if you will. I know Buddy Oxford is very familiar with different things like that, especially ordering. Why don't you get him to look into it to find out and bring that before the Commissioners' Court?
It's done.
It's done.
We've been hooking in food for about eight months with different vendors. And that's me, because I run up down the hall, and the first thing I say to the person that's looking into it is, if you hear from them, they go, well, we're waiting to hear back, and I go, I'm not going to talk to them. I won't miss none. I know I just started in January, but, you know, two months ago would have been, you learn everything that you mentioned. I want to...
You know, for somebody that don't know what we're talking about, we're having a good conversation, aren't we?
All right, all right. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, Bruce, in our motion, we got the money in the budget. Are you okay if we just approve the purchase of five additional vehicles because the money's currently in the Enterprise fund, or do we need to add something additional language?
I think the language would be better, since we've had vehicles ordered, canceled. We don't know where we are with Enterprise, and if we ask them... Go ahead and make the motion to be 10 total vehicles for that.
Okay.
So that way, it clarifies the error.
Okay.
And also, I'm a little concerned, you said 900 a month?
677 a month per vehicle.
Is that with the maintenance or without the maintenance?
There is no maintenance.
They don't get maintenance on police vehicles.
Okay. I wanted that figure to somehow be made public, how much a month it's going to be to come out, just so we have an idea.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
677 a month and some change.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Judge?
Sure.
I'm just curious, this is a curious question. On the police vehicle, they're treated different than your normal family car or truck.
You're asking the wrong guy.
Is the warranty still as good on the police vehicle?
My understanding is it's just higher suspension.
But...
Hidger suspension, different tires come on them, high-speed type radio.
But the warranty's still the same. That's what I'm...
Yes, the warranty's still the same.
Warranty's the same.
Three-year, 36,000 mile, you know, whatever you ask.
It's considered a police package.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's more designed to handle high speeds.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve the purchase of 10 sheriff's department's Ford interceptor vehicles, which is an additional five from the original budget, but we'll be doing a total purchase of 10.
Your Honor, may I say we're actually going in with Enterprises in reference to a rental aspect.
It's not rental, Phillip.
It's not rental.
It's not rental. It's not rental.
So moved on your motion, Judge.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And I guess as soon as we get the numbers on the upfitting, we'll get that to Cheryl or whoever, and get the process going, do a budget amendment to get that money situated so we can pay for that, once we know what that number is.
Will that take place when the vehicles come in or prior to that?
We're going to do them. We're outfitting them ourselves in Silver Springs, is my understanding. We're going to do them, we're outfitting them ourselves in Silver Springs, is my understanding.
Yeah, Malt Tech in Silver Springs and they, they have the actual quote of what the vehicle is, they can build it off of that.
So, they can, that can start pronto then, right? They don't have to wait till the vehicles.
We've already been asking them for a quote, we just haven't got it yet.
Yeah, they just can't, they obviously can't outfit the vehicles until they come in in five or six months.
But we can get the money.
I was just recording yesterday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, I was, I was just going to say, and I probably shouldn't say this, but since it is related to the vehicle, if April comes, we can look at the enterprise, how much money left in the budget and we can, we can get it out of that or have it come out and continue at that time.